All right, I call this board meeting to order. All board members are present and we have Emily House here from the Student Senate. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Lynn, second by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The agenda is approved. First up, we have Brad Kelvington presenting the School Board Recognition.
So last week was School Board Recognition Week and if you saw on Facebook, of course, I posted a picture of, the lovely picture of you, six altogether, and I just wanted to recognize the work that you do for the school district. So on behalf of Recorey Schools, I'd like to recognize and thank you for the work that you do for our kids. And I'd like to recognize you with a certificate. So first, Jennifer, on the left side.
Thanks.
Kara Hovin.
Thank you, Brad.
Congratulations, Kara. Thank you so much. Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Jason, thank you so much for all that you do. Sunny, thank you so much for all that you do. Shannon, thank you so much for all that you do. And we also like to recognize Emily House as our student representative, so thank you, Emily, for all that you do.
Thank you.
This is the beginning of a little bit of a crowd gathering in the back and so we will start, we'll move into our celebration of excellence where the board recognizes some of the wonderful things that are happening across our school district as well. So we have three different awards tonight. We'll start with Alpine Ski State Competition. So we have...
Or we're starting with robotics.
Oh, we're gonna start with robotics, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll start with robotics, perfect. So the VEX Robotics teams have made it to state, so...
Do you want to all slide in over here? You want to try and get your light view on camera as we head.
Okay. I'll stand on this side.
Come on, that one.
I'll start off. Good evening, everybody. This is our VEX Robotics Teams, and I will say Teams because I believe there are seven of them. They recently competed in state, state VEX Robotics competition. Did very well at St. Cloud. One of the teams, I believe, made the semifinals, if I'm not mistaken.
To the playoffs.
To the playoffs. So congratulations to all of you. I believe we had 35 students, pretty close to 35 students, involved in a very fast-growing activity at Recorey Middle School and Recorey High School. And so I just want to say that I'm really proud of all of you and I think the school board is as well.
Yeah. Congratulations and my name's Kara Hovin and I'm honored to be able to present the Recorey Cloud Award to all your teams. Just want to thank you and honor you for the work that you guys do. Robotics is such a great combination of technical and also having to learn all these interpersonal and transferable skills and also just want to thank your parents for their dedication and for the coaches because you guys put a lot of background work into it as well. So congratulations and on behalf of the Recorey School Board, we thank you.
And as we said, we do have our two main coaches here, Brian Heaney and Christie Warren, who work really hard for the success of this team, along with some volunteers that help ours as well. So come on forward, coaches, to accept this.
All right, great. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
And here's your official award.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we just bring the kids together and you can kind of get a team picture that you can...
So we're gonna, like, if you're taller, let's give you the back here and if you're not taller...
That's fine. Sneakers in your way. It's okay.
Just make sure that you can see the camera. If you can, then you're able to be in the picture. I'm gonna stand next to Kara.
Yeah.
All right, everybody.
Photos over here. Right over here.
Smile. All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Congrats. Thank you for coming this evening.
I tried looking at all the...
Thank you, guys. Grant and Jane, we'll be going to leave with you guys to laugh. Thank you. Dance, you're up.
You guys can go ahead. Hold this right here.
I got stitches out today.
Did you have stitches?
Melanie wore a big slit through my hand.
Next up, we have the Recorey Dance Teams. And we say Teams because both the Jazz and the Kick teams made it to state. And they ended up placing 10th for Jazz and 7th for Kick in the state competition AA. So congratulations. We also had four of our dancers sing the National Anthem for the competition to start it. Very impressed with their work behind the scenes as well. Our head coach, Leah Frank, does a tremendous job. This is our fourth year in a row both teams have made it. And that's very impressive, that's in any sport. So congratulations. It's definitely worth recognition at the School Board meeting.
Yeah, and I just, as Recorey School Board chair, I just want to say thank you so much for your hard work and dedication, especially to you, Coach. And you guys are just a super fun team to watch and obviously lots of years of dedication from you all, so on behalf of the School Board, we say congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to get a picture now?
Yep.
I'll try not to trip on court.
You're in the middle. Jane, you're in the middle.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Seventh place.
Last group tonight, we have Jake Wimmer and Grant Muffelman. They are here to represent the St. Cloud Breakaways Alpine Ski Team. Recorey is part of that co-op along with a number of other schools. They were very successful this year. They ended up placing second in sections and as a team made it to state at Giant's Ridge way up north in Dubwabik. That's how you say that, right? Pretty impressive placements. Also, it looks like Jake, you ended up placing 54th of the entire group and then was second on our team. Just to note, we have everybody returning on this team next year. Good things once again. Grant, where did you place? I can't remember.
I remember you very good.
You did know. This is about celebrating. So anyway, congratulations. This is a first. We've never had that happen before and you were part of that, so congratulations.
Yeah, and that's, I'm happy with that. But I just want to say, thank you for your excellence and the dedication to your school and so well at the St. Cloud.
All right, we will take a picture. Congratulations, guys. Ready to go. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Okay, so comments and requests from visitors. I don't see anybody here that's not on the agenda. Student Senate report. Emily, do you have anything to report?
After the snow week that knocked out our snow days week, we rescheduled that for later in March. The blood drive and snow days and dodgeballs all set back up.
All right.
I don't need too much snow to have snow days.
Yeah.
Hopefully, there will be no snow. It'll be spring days. Okay, next up on the agenda is our consent, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The consent agenda is approved. Action items: Approval of the payment to the Cold Spring Bakery.
Make a motion to make a payment to Cold Spring Bakery for check number 100758 in the amount of $67.97. Or 90 cents.
Second. Motion by Jason, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Second.
Lynn abstains. Motion carries. 2019-2020 school calendar. This is a tentative calendar that's being proposed.
That's final.
Oh, that's a final. Oh, we've already approved it as tentative, thank you. And so this is moving to...
The final.
To the final. Okay.
One other adjustment we'd like to make on this is that we want to spell out that if we were to have a makeup date next year like we had this year, and the makeup day went to the early out day, we would move that early out day to the last day of the week, much like we did the calendar adjustments. So people know in advance for next year, if the makeup day is on a Friday and that was scheduled as an early out, the full day will be go Thursday and then that Friday will be the early out day. So we'll just make it, we'll make a notation on the calendar, so just people know that.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how do our makeup days fall within terms? So like, I've had a lot of people ask questions about, well, what, they're missing all this time in this term and then they're making it up in other terms, so what really does that do for them?
We actually have extended the term.
Okay, that was the question that...
So we've added three or four more days onto the term.
Onto the term, okay. That was one question that I got to and I didn't know.
We just don't note that on the calendar because that's more of a building decision as far as when those grading periods end and start. And so I understand their questions, but I think that would, that just comes from communication from the high school. It's a good question. Thanks, Sunny.
Are there any other questions about the calendar? The proposed calendar for 2019 for the year? Is there any, is there a motion then to move it from the tentative calendar to the final approved calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn, second by Shannon. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The 2019-2020 school calendar is approved. Employment. There is a leave of absence request that has been submitted. Do you want to give a little bit of background?
Sure. Mr. Griffith has requested a leave of absence and then also resignation within the same letter. The board has the option to approve that leave or not. Based off of policy 610, Roman number five, letter A, number three, generally, the policy states generally that they not be granted for similar employment. So Mr. Griffith is leading our district for another district for a similar position. So that's what your policy tells you. You as the board have the right decision, have the decision, but based off of policy.
So this would be setting a new precedent.
This would be...
Now, policy is based off of state statute, part of what it is that allows it to move.
I couldn't speak to that as of right now, but I could do some research on it, Lynn, but I mean...
Well, I think it was referenced in the policy. It doesn't allow them to move to a different position.
It's a tough decision, right? Because Mr. Griffith has been here for a while. He does really good things with us, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. But again, as Kara said, you know, it's a precedent. And we, I was using my quote, that's what I remember, just because he took a different job, a teacher job, so we, I mean, we didn't have this special... Talking about what our policy actually said, but, you know, we follow the past. So I guess that's, you know, the reason, why did he even ask for this? I mean, we communicated that this isn't part of the policy or what made him think that this was gonna happen? Well, I haven't had that specific conversation, but I can tell you that if you don't ask, you're not gonna get. So if you ask the question, you find out whether or not you're gonna be granted or not.
There isn't anything part of the contract. It's just more of the policies.
Thanks.
And we did have this discussion that it's getting harder to have people on these leaves and then try and hire someone to take their position because it's not a for sure position if you get bumped out again. And given this situation of hiring teachers right now, I'd rather be able to hire someone and know that we can keep that person in that position and not have them bumped out.
We definitely are, Lynn, you're correct. We definitely are in a different hiring climate than we've been in the years pass. And people are looking for stability. They're not looking for, you might gonna be cut again in a year based off of a leave.
I mean, based on the fact that it would, it goes against our general, our policy's general guidelines, it would be precedent-setting and it makes it more difficult for us to hire, I think.
And retain.
And retain this position. I think we're kind of in a position, from my perspective, that it doesn't make sense for us to grant the leave request. I mean, of course, we want to try to, we want to treat our employees well and when we can work for these employees, it's in our advantage to do so, but I just don't see that this is a situation that it's in, you know, students' interest, from my perspective. Are you looking for action tonight?
It's on the action item, so yes, I believe, yes, we are looking for action on this.
So the motion would be to deny the leave.
The motion would be to deny the leave and accept the resignation.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
On the motion.
Lynn makes a motion to deny the leave request and accept the resignation of Chuck Griffith for the second. Second by Jennifer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Discussion items.
So with the February 20th snow day, we talked about, and I sent out to the public and to students and parents, with February 20th student day, or snow day, we need to adjust at the end of the year like we've done in the other, is that we would move that Thursday, which was currently an early out, to a full day. And then Friday, the 31st, the students would come back for the half day. So that would be the adjustment that I propose that we make on this year's calendar.
And how does that affect staff? They're already coming back the next week.
They're already coming back the next week on Monday and Tuesday and we're still in discussions on what to do with the third makeup day.
So this change would be the 31st becomes the last day of school, which is a half day, the 30th becomes a full day, and the teacher's last day would be the 5th. That's what this change is proposing, or...
That's what it's proposing for, only for students and we haven't finalized...
Oh, you haven't decided on the 5th.
On the 5th, correct. The only thing that we have decided is that we're going to somehow have 182 contract days, just how that ends. So I would recommend that we make that calendar adjustment.
But this is under discussion, so is that gonna come to the next?
Um, it is under discussion and we generally like to have not, but I, in this case, I think we should move it to an action item.
So...
So that I can send out to parents what they can expect on the last day as being official from the school board, calendar adjustment, even though, you know, I may have mentioned, but it is, it now came to fruition and now we need to actually make that calendar adjustment.
So we can make a decision on the student days?
On the student day, yeah.
So in general, we like to have some time, but because it's, you know, we want to let families know as soon as possible, it's probably best if we have an official decision from the school board, just so we can roll it out.
I mean, March 8th is not that far away, but if we wanted to wait...
I don't, I don't know that it's an item that needs to wait.
Realistically, the decision probably won't change.
There's not a lot of debate about this. I think it's more of an informational...
So you just need a motion to accept the calendar change for May 31st as last day of, or last student, last half student day and May 30th would be the last full student day.
Correct.
There's the motion.
Correct.
I have to write that down.
Okay. Motion by Sunny, second by Shannon. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The calendar adjustment is approved. So will we, will we be getting additional, we don't know for sure if we'll be getting additional requests for changes or adjustments?
If I could predict the weather.
But the rest of it, okay.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Administrative and board reports. Budget comparison report, Beth, you have included a budget comparison report in the packet. Something you want to point out? No? Okay. Are there any questions? The budget comparison report, something we see often, pretty standard information and you've explained any discrepancies or anomalies, so no questions?
Just a general question with the snow, like, what are we doing on snow removal?
Oh...
It's expensive, is the answer.
It's really expensive to me.
Yeah. We probably will be, we probably will be over budget on snow removal.
I'm guessing that there is an option.
We do proposals for it every couple of years. And we use different vendors and they're three different. We use more than this one.
Do they have, like, I thought there's places you can pay a flat fee regardless of how many times you plow. Do schools have that as an option or not, or?
I mean...
But it's some ways you don't want to...
Well, some ways you lose money to it. There's some ways we hardly allow.
Yeah. Well, I know that's sort of a risk, but I mean, you're locking in your risk, knowing that no matter what it's gonna be.
But they're not gonna do it because they've gotta pay employees every time they plow and they limit how much they're getting paid.
I have a question because I know there's other entities that do that. I just didn't know if that was possible.
Well, we also, I mean, we also are gonna be higher in our, in our fuel and bills as well, being cold and having to switch over to oil. It's one of those things that we can't control. We do our best to foresee and budget for that, but again, it's one of those variables that drive people like that crazy because there's nothing you can do about it. And we have to have the heat and we have to have our sidewalks cleaned and our parking lots cleaned and, you know, we've done the best we can with Brent, you know, in being in contact with Kramer's and the other two vendors about, you know, making sure it's done snowing before we do that. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can.
Pretty much everybody in the state is over that.
Just another reason to advocate for healthy, fun balance. Okay, moving on, superintendent report. First up, enrollment.
Yeah, so as you saw in the packet, we were hanging in there above our projected from the start of the school year, so I thought, you know, the, we're actually at the number that we started at, so that's, that's really good when you're in January and you're at the number that you started the school year with and you're above the target, so what you're projecting, so that's, that's a good thing. The second piece of information I have for you is the legislative update. And you can see that what I just handed out to you tonight is the governor's budget recommendations and how that affects our K, pre-K-12 education. And right off the top is the number, is the, the first one is a formula increase. So the governor has presented a three and two and you can see what that is for an increase of dollars coming into schools. So majority of what he's asking for is in the formula and we, of course, districts like that because that allows us flexibility. The second piece is the special education funding and that has been high on a lot of people's lists about trying to bring down the cross subsidy. And that cross subsidy, again, remember, is the amount of special ed dollars that is coming from the general fund dollars. And so we want, we want at least to hold that where it is and not take any more and that's what that money is for. I don't, I'm not gonna walk through them all, but I'm gonna highlight the next one because this one's important, the referendum renewal. So if we have a referendum on the books currently, what this, what this legislation would ask, would allow boards to do is have the ability to go out and renew that referendum for the same amount without going to the borders. And we talked today superintendent-wise, you know, to hold a special election or hold an election is, you know, anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000, depending on how big your district is, so, and how many polling places you have. So if you can, if the board has the authority to continue with the same dollar referendums that's on the books now without having an election, that's, that would be a good thing for boards to have. Safe schools revenue, so talking about an increase in safe schools that can be used for a number of different things, including secure entrances as well as buying down counselors. So that's, that's, that would be some good dollars to add as well. Again, there's a number of things here. Just wanted to highlight those, those top things for us. And I'll continue to, continue to send information and give you pieces of information like this for your talking points with your constituents.
So if hypothetically, if somebody were watching and they were really passionate about advocating for schools, what would be the best way for them to help in, as it relates to the budget?
That's, that's a really good question and over and over, what we hear is contact your legislators. If they get personal contacts, that is when things happen. So our former board member, Lisa Damon, who's in the House of Representatives, is a perfect person to contact. The other person... The other person for, for us is Jeff Howe in the Senate, so if there are things that are, that the public are really interested in, those personal contacts, whether it be through a phone call or through an email or a face-to-face visit to the Capitol or.
And I think this year especially, the Senate needs to hear that we need this money because they've already made comments that they're not happy with the governor's proposal.
Correct.
What's interesting to me is getting this proposed, so like, the biggest, the biggest factor with how I think things run on a daily basis is with how much funding we have. Because, uh, with all the cuts that have been made, you know, over the last fifteen years, we're a pretty fine-tuned machine, I mean, there's not, we need every dollar, um, and every dollar makes a big difference, so, um, like, when you ask questions about really fine details like snow plowing, that actually really does affect, like, our bottom line.
It does.
Um, so, and, you know, in a big budget, snow plowing isn't, it's a smaller item on the budget, but seeing this proposal makes me a little bit nervous because, you know, usually when, when you would have, um, an initial proposal, you would expect it to be like a, you know, a starting negotiating point. If we get what the governor is proposing, like, that means we're not making cuts. It's, it's not like this amazing windfall to school districts to start, you know, putting, implementing one-to-one devices or doing all of these things that we would see as more, you know, outside of the ordinary business, so. I just think it's really important that, um, we as a board advocate and, you know, as a school district advocate for our school purpose.
So Beth has already visited the Capitol, um, as part of our Region Six Day. I'm going on March twentieth as part of our, um, Super Tenants Association and the MSBA, um, day is March twenty-sixth, I believe it is and I'll send out the information, I highly encourage you, if you have the ability, to take the time off to go down and see our legislators.
And the C day is March?
I'm sorry, March twentieth is the C day. I, Beth went in my place on the, um, Region Day.
I did, I did M A S.
And M, through MSBA.
M A S and, and my Masbo group.
Masbo group. Thanks for, I'm reminding you that.
So there's an MSBA day and a C day.
There is a C day that Lynn and I are going to attend and then there's also an, uh, M A S, M A S, or MSBA day and I will send you that information.
In the past, some of the other school districts have brought parents with, for the C, the C visit to the legislature. So if there's any parents that are out there or if there's a way we can make some students, from the student senate, that would be good to.
Sure. Okay, well, thanks for staying on, on top of all the legislative stuff, that's important. All right, board committee, uh, and representative reports, uh, Jennifer?
Um, so I attended the community education.
You, oh, sorry, you just report on technology, the technology committee.
Oh, that's not, okay.
Community education.
The bold ones, are the ones we report on.
Oh. Yeah, you should report on community education as well, sorry. So just technology and community, community education.
Well, for one, technology committee met, or did not meet, uh, February eighth, it's snow day.
Oh, yep.
Um, and so there was an email exchange that I arrived late to regarding spending some dollars for technology related to the science, a request for the science. I, I'm, to clarify to me if that was approved or not, that's.
Okay. Um, I, my ECFE Advisory Council rescheduled because of snow. And it happened to be the week that I was on vacation, so I was not able to attend that. Uh, Sunny, you don't have any?
I don't have any bolded ones.
Well, congratulations. Shannon?
Uh, the Busco did me, they, I did you a call, the, uh, I don't know if they reached out to you, grabbed a day one, put up a sign or some recognition, maybe the backside of one of these fields.
Saddle, I think it is.
Yeah, and, uh, they were just asking me, you know, did I see the issues with that? I said, no, I don't see them, but, yeah, they need to make sure that they're communicating with Brent and, you know, the campaign costs, and, yeah, yeah. They seem to have a better control and considering how much money they're giving to us so that we can function, um, I can't see why they would say no.
All right. Uh, Liz?
Okay, we did, Brad and I did go to the C meeting and I was, but not, okay, it was one of the Fridays when we didn't have school and we still went to the C meeting. And there were not very many people that made it that day, um. And unfortunately, I didn't read my notes with, but, um.
We did hear, um, uh, the Education Commissioner Catherine Ricker speak and, uh, she just reiterated a lot of the, um, proposals that Governor Walz was, came, came out with, with his recommendations. And then we also heard, um, Kim Gibbons and, um, members of the, um, Cary and the, um, SCRED, um, staff on their proposal or what they've been doing with special education about moving away from the IQ testing to more of a, um, tier, MTSS model. So it was a good presentation, I, I'm a huge follower, believer in, um, what Kim Gibbons is saying as far as getting away from IQ as the predictor as the qualifier for special education services. Because actually, I think, I don't think it's very equitable at all, in fact, I think it leaves some kids out of the, um, intervention services that should get it because their IQ and their achievement are too close together, so it's not discrepancy enough and that's, that's how we, that's how we, um, that's how we determine special education, if there's a discrepancy model and we, we would really like to get away from discrepancy model and we'll see if Ben Sterns, um, comes on board with that. I do believe it's going to be something that's going to happen legislatively.
And they did talk about introducing legislation.
Okay. All right, Jason?
Uh, Sterns, I, that's attached there, um, I think, just let me check my notes, because this is, uh, in January or February.
And the board meeting is rescheduled for tomorrow.
Yeah, it's for tomorrow, so we, we are meeting, yeah, February is tomorrow. Uh, probably one of the big things is we did get a rebate, it looks like it was about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, something like that for our, uh, uh, payment there, so we got a little bit back. Otherwise, pretty straightforward, if anybody had questions, you can talk to me. Then I didn't know, because I think, um, Jen, refer and myself are on policy that's not highlighted. It's just talking to the group, I mean, you're going to see the policies coming through, so if there's questions at that time, I didn't know if we needed to necessarily report off of that committee, because it should be coming through.
It's already coming through as a discussion, that's a good point. Okay, all right, uh, upcoming events. Anything anybody wants to point out or have questions on? All right, we are, that concludes our business, so is there?
I do.
Oh.
When is the next technology committee, is it on here, I'm missing something? I don't see it.
All right, we can get you some information, yeah, we'll have to look that up and get you some information after the board meeting.
March eight.
Switching, yeah.
So you're going March as well?
I'm going.
Or is this?
In May. You're going to the Cold Spring.
So March, well, March twelfth, I have it.
Yeah, and then you're doing April.
I'm doing, so then April. Those are two different. Yeah.
The facilities and grounds meetings are still listed on here as afternoons. And they've all been rescheduled.
Okay. They've been canceled, I don't know that they've been rescheduled.
The twenty, the one, this Wednesday is, is still happening.
This Wednesday?
That's what I just confirmed this morning, or is that not happening?
That's this Wednesday at seven AM?
Yeah.
I think that's the one we're starting.
And he had called me about this Wednesdays too and said that he would call back and then I, or that he would look into it, but I'd never heard anything, so I guess I wasn't certain that this Wednesdays was happening either.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, motion by Jason?
Second.
Second by Sunny, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. The meeting is adjourned.
We're all adjourned except for.